Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the January 12th, 2023 meeting of the CCAC Board of Trustees. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. My name is Kevin Kinross. First meeting as the chair, so bear with me today as I try to get through all the moving parts. I would say I've had a chance to be on the board for a little bit of time now, and Fred Teeman and Amy Kuntz and most recently Dr. Generet have really done a remarkable job as chair. I've learned a lot from them. I'll do my best to follow in their footsteps as we try to do the best we can for our community college. I guess our first order of business today would be to approve the minutes. Oh, I have to call the roll. Yes, there we go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Benita, always on top of that, would you please call the roll for us?
Mary Ann Arrington?
Present.
John Burton Falk?
Present.
DeCosta?
Present.
Maria Carling?
Present.
Mary Ann Eisenreich?
Present, but I can't enable my video.
Okay. Elizabeth Fishback?
Present.
Marty Isler?
Here.
Kevin Kinross?
Here.
Elizabeth Monroe?
John Paul Mary?
Here.
Taco?
Here.
He Spilka? We have a new board member who won't be with us today. Gilmar Velquez. Jessica Wheeler?
Present.
Mr. Chair, we do have form.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. As we move through our agenda, our next item is to approve the minutes from our November 3rd, 2022 meeting. I hope everyone had a chance to review those. I know they were mailed to you and also sent electronically. So assuming that we have, does anyone make a motion for us to approve those minutes? We have a motion and a second, so I would call for the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you for that. Please note that that passed unanimously. As we move on to our next item of business, we have to approve another set of minutes. This would be from our December 19th, 2022 board meeting. If remember, we had that short meeting to talk about our audits right before the holidays there. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review that and is comfortable with what they've seen. If so, may I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
And the second?
Second.
Great. For any discussion, we'll call all for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll note that, and I believe we have approval, so we'll accept those. Thank you for that. We now have an important motion or resolution, I should say. We have some special guests with us today. The family of Bill Cagney. Before we get into it, I would just like to take one moment. When I first met Bill, I was a young man in my twenties, working for Dan Onorado as he ran for county executive and then became county executive. And first job, first big job, and you know, Bill Cagney was one of the first people that might sound silly, but he was the first person that like remembered me, remembered my name, remembered my role on the campaign. And it just meant a lot to me. A guy like Bill Cagney knows who you are, remembers who you are, cares about your opinion when you're 24 years old. So I'm sorry, Bill Cagney meant a lot to me personally. So if we could maybe invite the family to join us in the front. Dr. Bullock, can I have a couple of things we'd like to present and talk about with you? Thank you. First off, would you mind introducing yourselves, so which of you is here with us? An honor to have you with us today.
I'm Patty.
I'm Julie, his oldest.
Michael.
Maggie, the youngest.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. We have a resolution. I'd like to read to you today if I could before I turn it over to Dr. Bullock, but it's a resolution to recognize Bill Cagney. Whereas William Cagney served with distinction on the Board of Trustees of the Community College of Allegheny County for 12 years, including nine years as Chair of the Student Success, Retention, and Completion Committee. And whereas Mr. Cagney's leadership and advocacy led to so many fruitful partnerships, such as the one the college has with the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, which helped to create food pantries at all CCAC campus and center locations. And whereas Mr. Cagney has given generously of his time and talents to create and expand programs that benefit CCAC students, including the establishment of our student trustee. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees and the President of the Community College of Allegheny County, take a moment to remember our colleague, and more importantly, our friend, Bill Cagney, whose tireless work on behalf of the college and in the community helped improve the quality of life for those living and learning in southwestern Pennsylvania. It's signed today, the 12th day of January 2023, by myself, Kevin Kinross, and our President, Dr. Bullock. Thank you very much.
Honored to have you join us today. I like to share one memory, one great contribution, one of many, from our fellow trustee, William Cagney. Cagney was so committed to our students, and he was always looking for every opportunity that he could to enhance their success and access to the resources. One of his passions was the food pantry. He wanted to ensure all students, also include any staff, have access to food. He worked diligent with the entire board, the college community, the regional presidents, to ensure that the food cupboards were stocked and easily accessible for students. And he frequently would ask each trustee, how is the food pantry going? What's the update on the food pantry? What can we do more of? Throughout his tenure, he helped to launch a food pantry on each one of CCAC's campuses. And on our centers, we offer food boxes as a way to support. So in order for us to remember that legacy, what we're going to be doing, and will be unveiled very soon, is that our south campus food pantry will be called the William T. Cagney Food Cupboard. So his name, his legacy, will be a part of the college community for life. And every time someone stops by a food pantry, they will always remember the great work that trustee William Cagney provided to CCAC and the students that he loved. So we thank you for sharing the time, allowing Bill to share time with us. He was a great supporter. I enjoyed the times that we would go to conferences, knowing he's going to bring back 15 things for me to do. It was always a great joy to have him with us. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, our faculty, our staff, we want to present the William T. Cagney component. We also want to provide you we want to provide you Bill's big smile, his name and board. This is his book, book with his name, his name tag. And he loves his granddaughter, and he would always ask us for something, so we want to ensure so. Thank you. And if you follow me.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
This way. So one of the great honors of working and providing services at the college as a trustee or as a president, you get recognized with your meritized status. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, the college, myself, Bill will go down in history as trustee emeritus for services from 2010 to 22. Please, if you have any remarks, we welcome you. You don't have to stand in. Picture.
Working with all of you, I can let you know that. He always had stories to tell me afterwards. As much as he knew he had to do the Zoom meetings, he'd much rather be in person with all of you. I can tell you that. Just thank you so much. This was very unexpected.
Thank you. We'll get a picture with you in front of it, so we'll send it to you. Can you see his name?
Yes, there we go. Everybody look at me. Three, two, one. Big smile, three, two, one. Whoa.
Thank you again so much.
Dr. Bullock?
Yes.
Before the family leaves, can some of the trustees provide some remarks as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Jay Costa, and I apologize that I'm not there to be with you today. I had every intention. I think Bill would appreciate this. I'm here with plumbers down in my basement replacing a water tank that blew up this morning. And so I apologize for not being there, but I just want to share my thoughts and comments about Bill. And I had the opportunity to know him for many years, both as a major labor leader, but also serving on the board. And I would tell you that there's were very, very few board members who are more committed to the work that we did on this board. And I would tell you that I think, and I've said this before, and I think the county executive has repeated it multiple times, and others have as well. We have the best board in Allegheny County from all county government. And it's because of people like Bill, their commitment and their passion for the mission of the college. To me, it's been outstanding. And the work that he's done, as Dr. Bullock talked about, and President, Chairperson Kinross spoke about, the work with regard to the food bank and the like. But also, the manner in which he worked with our students as our student committee chairperson, bringing students to the board as part of our board now, to be able to give those folks an opportunity to understand what governance is about at a community college. And just the work that he's been done and the programs that he's brought back to Dr. Bullock. We were blessed to have someone of his caliber, his commitment and the sincerity in wanting to do what was best for the students as part of our board. So I think I can speak for many of the members. There are many new members on the board over the last year or two, maybe didn't get the chance to get to know Bill as well as us older folks did, myself and Marty and Jimmy and some others, and Kevin and a few others, Mona. But Dr. Arrington, he was really a good board member, and I think the college was blessed and very fortunate to have someone of his caliber serve on this board. So my heartfelt, obviously, sympathies to all of you. But thank you for allowing him to be able to serve us and serve the students at CCAC. So thank you. Thanks for letting me speak, Dr. Bullock.
Any other board members, please feel free.
Dr. Bullock?
I think the bottom line was that Bill on the Student Success Committee always had, what was in the best interest of our students, whether it be food, or whether it be support for a flat tire, or whether it be a program that wasn't quite working for them, they needed tutors. He always had in his heart what our students needed, and that's what he talked about every student success meeting was wonderful.
Absolutely.
Just remember to thank Mr. Generet for appointing him to the board, because I know that's a huge responsibility that he has to do for all the boards in the county. And obviously, he's choosing wonderful people to work at these boards, especially this one. So I wish to thank him.
Mr. Palmary, I heard you say something?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bullock. Good evening, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today. Circumstances prevailed, but I just wanted to say, I have a picture of Bill and I, I think it was my first commencement back a few years ago, and I'll treasure that. And I just want to say this to the family, my condolences to all of you. And Bill epitomized what a board trustee should be. And it was a pleasure to work with him and to get to know him. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
This is Mary Ann Eisenreich. I worked with Bill on workforce development, enjoyed every minute of it, and sat next to him at many meetings. He was a gentleman and a very, very kind man. I apologize too that I'm not there. I can't get my video on. I don't know why, but so I'm the little round head. I really enjoyed Bill at every meeting. He was just fun and genuine and kind.
Thank you again. Please feel free to join us for the meeting. If you'd like to stay through the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
He looked at his family and you could just see him. He's just looking at his mom.
New Year's, everybody. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. That was very well done, Dr. Bullock. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Hopefully, that will inspire us to do our best that we can as trustees and live up to the standards that Bill laid out for us. Moving forward on our agenda, and next up is moving into some of our committees. We'll start with our Finance Audit and Facilities Committee. Senator Costa is the lead for us there. So Senator, would you please give us your report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, the action item we have before us is the annual and monthly fiscal summary, in this case, the fiscal summary for the five months ending November 30th of '22. Indicated in the particulars that the members receive, the trustees received our revenue. We continue to lapse where we want to be with regard to our revenue by the amount of $5.8 million roughly. And similarly, our expenses are also under budget in this rate case by about $4.81 million. At the end of the day, right now, we're showing approximately a $1 million out of balance or discrepancy or disparity. And at the end of the day, Dr. Bullock has continued to pledge that he will work towards a balanced budget by June 30th, and has that and expects as we go forward into November, for example, to have a better looking fiscal summary as we go December, excuse me, the six month period for December, expects to have a better picture for us at that point in time. The committee discussed it and recommends to the full board that we adopt the fiscal summary for the five months ending November 30th, 2022. And I put that in the form of a motion and asked for its approval.
Second.
Okay, seems like we have a motion and a second. Would there be any discussion on that topic? Okay. Hearing them, we'll ask for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Any other items from your committee today?
No, no other action items, Mr. Chairman, but we do have, just want to report out some of the discussions that the committee engaged in earlier today. One related to Dr. Bullock provided an update on facilities, more specifically, the Workforce Training Center, as well as Chalfont Hall. And in both instances, the work is progressing well and seemed to be on target with respect to their opening at different points later this year, one in midsummer and then one late summer. And we're encouraged by the work that's being done and the efficiency of the work, and we're excited that we'll be able to, it looks like, meet those deadlines or those opening dates. The second area we discussed was trying to work to provide, and we'll work with the administration and Jim Flynn and others to be able to craft a, I don't want to call it a policy, but draft something that would create a situation where the students, encouraging the students and incentivizing the students to want to register early, to be able to get their courses registered early, and be able to provide them an incentive along those lines, which encompass, could encompass changing the time at which we would offer refunds, extending it for a period of time for students to be able to receive 100% of their refunds, for example, about beyond the first, into the first week of classes. That's not been finalized yet, but that's one of the things that the administration will come back to us and further discuss, and hopefully, we'll be able to implement it and talk about it. And if we have to sign off on it and adopt it by next meeting, so it'll be in place early March for that purpose. So those are the two items that we discussed, and we thought we had a good meeting, and that's where I would end my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Senator. As Senator mentioned, the building at the end of the street there, you know, I know it'll be dark when we break tonight. Anybody here in the room? But if you haven't seen it recently, it is worth a drive by at some point. The progress is noticeable and exciting. You know, Dr. Bullock will comment on that later this evening. But thank you. I thought we had, I sat in on that subcommittee. I thought we had a good discussion with our other members today. So moving on to our other subcommittee, our Student Success, Retention, and Completion Committee. Trustee Eisenreich is leading that along with Marty Isler. Mary Ann, do you have any report for us today?
Just a brief report, Chairman. We, first thing we did when we met was we did a moment of silence in honor of trustee Cagney, because these are big shoes to fill that he's vacated. So I'm going to do my best and enlisted the help of Marty to make sure I do my best. Jessica gave a nice report. Jessica, will you give this to the board? And go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to spotlight in today's meeting, the CCAC student leaders and their efficient months of November and December. First, in November, the Student Life and Engagement Department organized a leadership retreat at Seven Springs Mountain Resort for our student ambassadors and our Student Government Association. These student leaders engaged in team and friendship building activities and set goals for the academic year, including supporting the math department to expand Pi Day celebrations and to streamline the way that new clubs are recognized at our school. Also, in December, our Student Government Association approved a student-led project to create a comfortable game space in the Allegheny Campus Cafeteria. Members of the PTK Alpha Mu Theta Chapter will enhance the Allegheny Campus Cafeteria by installing arcade-style games and stylish, comfortable furniture. The space should increase the amount of time students spend on campus with their fellow students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. You all may want to look in your packets. There is a PowerPoint presentation in your packets from Jessica. If you look at the pictures of the students, you can feel the enthusiasm on the page. It's, they're just great. So, and we had a presentation by Dr. APJ on the data surrounding retention and completion as it pertains to a diverse population. She did a really good job of breaking things down. There were a lot of good questions asked, but my understanding is that this will be presented in the president's report. So I'm not going to go into any further detail on that. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Jessica, thank you for your work with us. Thank you for your report. Very well done. As we move on throughout our agenda, we'll move to Dr. Bullock's report. I'll turn it over to President Bullock for his monthly update.
All right. Well, good evening. It's great to see everyone, and Happy New Year to all. I trust that you all had a great holiday celebration and enjoyed the time with family and friends. Of course, you know, there's a lot that has been going on at the college, and I'm very excited today to share with you a very comprehensive update on some key components. Starting out with, this past December, I should say, each year, the college goes through, the college goes through a financial audit by an independent auditor. And in December, Snyderstown met with the Audit Finance Committee to provide an update on the finances that went through June 30, 2022. The results of the audit, it was an unqualified, clean opinion without any findings. As we know, an unqualified opinion is the highest opinion issued by audit. The auditors also confirmed that the college is in compliance with regulations related to the federal funds that the college received. So this is a great outcome. Faculty, I'm sorry, administration have worked very, very hard to maintain a balanced budget, and I'm appreciative of the work of Vice President Flynn and the entire finance department for the work that they did to ensure that the college yielded this positive outcome. Are there any questions regarding the audit? Next, we'll go to enrollment. Thank you. Next, we'll go with the enrollment for the spring semester. Our spring semester starts next Tuesday, January 17. As of yesterday, the numbers that you see were total headcount, 7.4, new students, 900, continuing students, 6,500, total registration, 22,008.05, total FTE, 5374. The headcount does represent about a 9.67% short. However, if today's numbers, that number has increased, so we're slowly closing, but we are still not at the targeted enrollment goal. However, I do want to acknowledge that there are a number of programs that are experiencing enrollment growth, which includes our skill trades, our trade apprenticeships, health information technology, radiation technology, cybersecurity, IT support specialists, network support specialists, multimedia programming, simulation and gaming, BIM technician, digital graphic design, and early education and child development. In addition to the credit program, there is a number of non-credit programs that are also showing great demand, including commercial driver license, certified nurse assistant. including commercial driver license, certified nurse assistant, mechatronics, and the solar full-boat tech technician. What we are seeing is individuals are looking for training in some of our high-demand skills areas, short-term credentials that lead into IT careers, entry courses, entry programs into the LI Health, CNA, along with non-credit training in this new and evolving full-boat tech component that is regarding the installation of the, what's the rooftop called? Solar panels. That's a growing area. We anticipate as time progresses that this will narrow. To support us with this, we are really trying to better understand enrollment as a whole. And we launched our work with the enrollment team late last spring under the leadership of Dr. Rebecca Dupont and Mr. Dan Duffy. They're working along with a group of faculty, staff, and administrators to prepare a comprehensive list of tactics that we will implement to achieve enrollment goals, working closely with our acro consultants that are providing benchmark practices, enrollment initiatives that have occurred other places, and helping the team look through the data, look at our processes, and bring forth a plan that will allow us to address enrollment. Some of the key strategies that are in progress, communication plan, and that's specifically looking at how are we communicating to students as they come through the admissions process or any other steps from start to finish? What communication, written or verbal, is provided to the students to ensure that they are getting clear information from a person or from a written component that will ensure their easeability to go through the entire process? The business process improvement, Dr. APJ and Dr. Kennedy are leading this effort. And they're providing internal review of the processes and bringing forth revised processes that are easy, easy to follow and to understand. E-recruit training, it's our new software that we have. We want to ensure that all enrollment specialist staff are trained and utilizing e-recruit to put information in. So anyone at any time is able to go in and see specific recruitment activities that are being implemented. It is our hope that with all the work that we're doing with the new strategic enrollment plan, that at some future, not too distant timeframe, I will come in and be shouting joy with just steady enrollment increase, because I'm confident that making the necessary changes, making those difficult decisions on processes that we've just embraced and have not been as flexible, agile in making the changes, it will improve our ability to connect, admit, advise, test, and register in a more expeditious manner. I'll keep you updated as we continue to make progress. Are there any questions on the strategic enrollment plan or enrollment? Completion and retention. I want to define completion and retention as to how the college uses both of these terms. Some of this was discussed in the earlier Student Success Committee. But we want to bring it in because it also contributes to the bottom line of enrollment, specifically to retention. When we talk about completion, are we talking about completion of a course? Completion of a degree? That's our measure that we look at. What's commonly accepted as a definition for retention? We look at students persisting fall to fall, fall to spring, or is there some other mechanism that may be short-term component that may also come in through the summertime? Why is this important? Because CCAC has been an active participant with the NCBBB, which is the National, let's get these, the National Community College Benchmark Project, which is the project in which colleges are able to enter the data. By entering the data, it also allows us to be aggregated and then be compared to other institutions to see how we perform. It also, we use the IPads. And the IPads data allows us to also compare our sales to other institutions to show how are our students persisting from fall to fall, fall to spring? For example, under the National Community College Benchmark, when you look at the measure, which is generally based on first-time, full-time students, you will see that CCAC is down on the poll at about twenty four point nine percent. Now, I think it's important to think of the different variables that may exist. About sixty-three, sixty-four percent of our students are part-time. So when you look at the aggregate of part-time to full-time, out of that percentage of full-time students who completed within the three-year window, we're at about a twenty four point nine percent. If you look at the next component, which is specific to part-time students over six years, you will see that we elevate our sales and we are number three. Because students are part-time, they may take longer to persist, but they eventually complete their studies. And that compared to other colleges, we are in line with part-time students' performance. Now, let's look at the next slide, which looks at fall to fall. Students that persist from fall to fall, we're about in the middle, about a forty-seven point nine percent comparison to others. The next, next term, which could be the term persistence, we are down about sixty point five percent. Now, why is this important? Because we want to make every effort to keep as many students as we can actively engaged, which may require looking at how we offer our classes and will classes be offered in a shortened span, such as eight-week classes? Can there be any other clustering of courses to expedite a student in completing a certificate that ladders into the associate's degree? All of those are elements that can make a difference in retaining a student and keeping the student engaged. Now, you probably wonder, based on this data, who are we compared to? Based on the information that's entered into the clearinghouse and the institutions that enter the data and participate, you have, we're compared to Cuyahoga, Kirkwood Community College in Iowa, Madison Technical College in Wisconsin, Metropolitan Community College in Missouri, Milwaukee Area Technical College, Southwestern Illinois College, St. Louis Community College in Missouri, Warbunese in Illinois, and Wayne Colley Community College in Michigan. Each of these institutions have similar characteristics to CCAC. They are also participants in entering the data, and that's how they are able to aggregate and compare what you saw in some of the results that represent CCAC. Questions?
How does this, how does CCAC's tuition compare to the, we've seen tuition comparisons within Pennsylvania, but I wonder whether that's a component?
I'll have to go see if that data is collected. In this mechanism, I don't have an answer for that. I know how we are compared within Pennsylvania community colleges. But I'll check and we'll report back. Any other questions?
Just an observation. Thank you for including the values in addition to the chart, because when you look at, for example, fall to fall, the value, the clusters are actually fairly tight, really only two percent off what would be considered the top national rank, but two percent puts us in the middle. So
That's correct.
feels like it needs a bit of a clearer picture that we're not that far off.
With some
The gap is not that big.
Right, it's not that extensive.
Yeah.
With some intentional work, looking at our processes, our communication, that gap can steadily close. And that's our goal. That also will yield an opportunity to automatically increase the enrollment, because if you retain them, you have an enrollment from the fall to going to spring, which is generally less than the fall, you automatically increase enrollment numbers. Now, an important component, an important component within the college is also the Office of Supportive Services. Why is this significant? Because we serve a very broad, diverse population. In the Office of Supportive Services, looking specifically at a snapshot of our students, this fall, six hundred and thirty-five students registered with a, registered with a disability. Of that six hundred and thirty-five students, two hundred and sixty-two are new to seeking those services. And then three hundred and ten students have more than one registered disability. So when you look at the aggregate, next slide, please. This breaks it down to just show the numbers of students that I just summarized. Total number of accommodations, when you look at the total number of accommodations, meaning all the requests of the students, twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four. When you look in the next category, next slide, disability category, it ranges from an individual that may have autism spectrum disorder, which is one hundred and twelve, AHHDADD, two hundred and seventeen, all the way down to visual impairment, which is nine. So it serves a very broad group of students. Now, what's significant is, next slide, each of these students are able to access intervention and care, where that they are supported by support specialists. Our support specialists provide over three hundred individual appointments, around four hundred cases, which includes academic performance, referrals, midterm grades. Support specialists provide weekly email updates to students. Support specialists provide outreach to a hundred and seventy-eight students with registration alerts. In addition, of the twelve thousand three hundred and forty-three accommodations, five hundred and fifty-three exams were proctored, one thousand thirty-two requests for e-text and materials were provided, a thousand and eighty-eight accommodations utilized assistus technology. Fifty-one students have a disability that requires assistance in the event of an emergency. Sign language interpretation is required by nineteen classes, which are coordinated by this office. So you can see that there is a lot of excellent work that's provided in this office to support a group of students that come to CCAC to access education and/or quality education. Now, what it also shows is that this intervention that is being provided does have a positive impact on students. So I'm going to go through the different choice to show you the impact. So if you take the fall to fall retention and the the gold is representing the students that get the assistance, the blue is all students, and the gray are students with non-disability, you will see that in eighteen nineteen, fifty-eight point nine percent went from fall to fall in nineteen twenty, fifty-one point eight percent in twenty twenty-one, fifty-eight point eight, and in twenty-one, twenty-two, fifty-four. Now, each year is higher than the students, all students, as well as it's higher for students that do not have a non-disability. What this also suggests is that that interaction, that intervention, plays a positive role in keeping the students engaged and aware of things that they need to do. It also shows care and support. That also plays a critical role in students' persistence and retention. Let's go to the next slide. This is fall to spring. And this is the area that we want to continue to improve on. So you will see, again, using the gold, which are students with disabilities, they all have very high retention, seventy-four, seventy-three, seventy-five, and seventy, seventy-three, compared to students, all students. So the more intervention that a student has, it appears that it has a positive impact in retaining and encouraging students to persist. Next slide. This is fall to fall retention, students with disabilities by full-time and part-time. Full-time, full-time students are the gold, and the part-time students are the gray. So you will see across every session year, full-time students persist still at a higher rate. In part-time has steady, but in twenty-two, that was a slight decrease. When you compare it to our all students, the full-time students still exceed the regular students. And then the last slide. This is fall to spring retention. Students with disability full-time, and I don't even have to point, you can see the significant difference here also from fall to spring, that the numbers are significantly drastic from the intervention that the students are getting, that interaction. They are persisting, they're registering, they are succeeding very well. So it's a great resource that the college offers. The demand continues to grow. Additional resources will be allocated to ensure that the office has the resources to support the increased number of students that are seeking these services at the college. Are there any questions that I can answer? Oh, I need the genders. Forgot the genders. That's one more, I said. With gender, the females are the gold and the males are the gray. So you can see that females, in regards to retention, is a lot greater. All students slightly are slightly above the male, but overall, the females are beating all. And then the last one, I think, is fall to, one more. Fall to spring retention by gender. And then this instance, you will see that the males is high in the beginning, and then it shifts back to the females. So I wonder what's occurring here that didn't occur in the other three years. But overall, females' performance, retention is slightly higher than males. And we could discuss different variables that could be occurring. But it's, and if you look at the data, the majority of our students are female.
Yes. So it should be commended that the extra mile and the resources are there and available, because the students definitely are the ones who are going to benefit from that. We, as trustees, need to continue to support and ensure that the resources are there and available for that work to continue to do what it's doing. Because if the need is growing, then the resources have to grow and match at the same time. So we've got to pay close attention to that and make sure that that is occurring. But, you know, a good job to the staff, team, and leadership in ensuring that, one, the details and the data are there and we're able to see and track that. And, two, that we're moving nicely with it, and, three, that we continue to be able to provide that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then there are two final charts that show the fall-to-fall breakdown by race. Uh, the dark blue, light blue, the dark blue is two or more races. The light blue is all students. Uh, the yellow, it's white students. The green is unknown, and then the gray is black African-American students. So you can see students with two or more races from fall to fall, there's a lot higher. Black students are on the lower end, students with um unknown, online with it. So it's interesting data that we have to look at, but when you look at the comparisons, it does uh pique one's curiosity to dive further into the data to see what what are the obstacles that are impacting students' persistence? Is it finance? Is it job? Is it family? Is it childcare?
Is that academic year, COVID?
Uh, the COVID year would have been part of twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. So if you, this would be this area here, straight up, and you will see uh it, it started to go up in twenty, then it started to go down. Uh, and the last year and a half has been unprecedented with changes in work. Um, the Great Exodus, delay in then seeking employment, jobs that once paid ten dollars, now pay twenty dollars an hour. So it's just shifting, the economy has shifted, so we're really trying to better understand the economy, the impact it has on students, and all the variables that are in our community that's impacting it. And we don't wanna leave our behavioral uh health matters that could also be contributing with the different variables that everyone is impacting, that can also have an impact on, on students' persistence.
Especially that, with that being the largest disability.
Yes.
Um, when we're breaking it down with, for students with disabilities by race, are we getting to a situation where the numbers are low enough that it, we're, we're talking about small numbers, so?
Uh, that's a good point. Um, the, this does not include Alaskan, Native, Asian, Hispanic, or Pacific Island, because the numbers were too low to include.
All right, good, thank you.
Good, good question. Next one, I think we have one more, fall to spring. So you will see that, in this case, two or more races did very well, that was a peak. Um, our black students, here, there's a beginning slight increase. This growth is improving. Uh, the dark blue is all students, so that was a peak. In nineteen, the pandemic hit, it's a drop, now they're beginning to go back up. Any questions? Questions? I would just, again, acknowledge the great work that the office is doing to serve our students and ensure they have access to the supportive services that they need to successfully thrive uh in their chosen courses and career paths. Now, we'll move to our facilities and capital projects, uh starting with our workforce training center. Uh, we're getting, we're getting close. Starting with our emergency uh repairs. Um, over the December uh break, we experienced uh several pipes to burst across uh the college campuses, including Allegheny, South, and Boys. You see in the pictures, uh, the water. Uh, this is South. Um, but you can see the water, although this looks shining like wax, that's water. This is the screen. Uh, you can, you can also see, next slide, you can also see, the next slide, these are classrooms and labs. This is water that has spread throughout uh the floors. All of this has been cleaned up, all the carpet is being pulled up, next slide. This is showing you how the carpet has been removed from those damaged areas um and humidifiers put in. I do want to also note that we did air quality tests to assess the air quality. The results came back normal. Uh, those tests will be monitored. Um, new carpeting has been installed, we have one more picture, that new carpeting has been installed, today was the last day that the uh cop, carpeting team would be on site. Uh, damage also occurred in the Visual Arts Center, which is the space that is used by Pittsburgh Public Police. Uh, pipes burst on the second, running water to the first, down to the basement. Uh, those repairs will commence next week, but everything is stabilized. Air quality tests were also done in the back, and those results also came back normal. It will be monitored periodically, just to ensure. I want to also note that uh housekeeping, ITS facilities uh have been working diligently to get the uh furnishings back in order, uh to ensure that the classroom, lab spaces are in position to welcome students and faculty back to spaces. On tomorrow, a professional cleaning team will be on site to professionally clean using required chemicals to ensure that there are no unknowns on surfaces, so that when the occupancy returns in a few days, everything is back to its close to normal. Now, one major component in the Milton Hall was our elevators, it has three elevators. Uh, all three had some water, but two had more water. So two of the three are not working, one is working. It has been certified as in order, working properly. Um, so we are going to relocate, our classes are being relocated to the first floor, lower floors, because it's easier access without the elevator. However, the classes that must be on the upper floors, which are our specialty courses, radiologic technology, respiratory uh technology, uh maybe elements of some of the nursing, they have to use that space, but otherwise, they were relocated to other spaces on the campus. We anticipate this space will be completed uh within the next uh few weeks. Um, there are some pieces that we had to order, like computers that were impacted, um TV screens and monitors, but ITS had some that are replacing it. Uh, but overall, it should be back to order. Uh, so we're very pleased with the work that the entire team has done uh over the last two weeks to address the concerns, put corrective actions into place, and to make every effort to get the spaces back in order. The insurance has been working very closely with the college, and, and we are hopeful that all impacted areas will be supported through uh the insurance.
Okay.
Any questions?
We work on the cleanup, cleanups are never easy.
And have to be quick. Uh, next, this is our workforce training center. Uh, this is, um, more has been done since I took this picture, but this is showing you the form, the size, the work that's being done. Uh, it will, again, be a great resource that will allow us to expand our offerings of workforce careers and automation technology, additive manufacturing, um, some of the information technology courses, uh, non-credit initiatives, and a new school of culinary arts. Uh, this is the final product that it will look like, so it would be a magnificent piece that will welcome individuals at the intersection of Brighton and Ridge Avenue. Our next piece is the Center for Faculty Innovation, which is the mansion next door, Shawfront Hall. Progress is being made on this facility. You can see the restorations that's occurring with the glass, stained glass windows, um, as well as any other new slate roof has been installed. And even a new chimney had to be installed, it was a requirement. So the chimney, right up here, and here, is a brand-new chimney that they constructed and set down into the building. This building had a own elevator, which was not the elevator you would use for now something more public and commercial. So a brand-new elevator has been installed from the basement to the third floor. Uh, it did require relocating a stairway in order to put the large elevator in. Um, it will be a great resource for our faculty, as well as our endowed professors. Faculty will have access to technology, training spaces, office spaces, meeting spaces. This would be the final product when it's finished. So another great addition that will welcome persons from this end of Ridge Avenue onto uh the campus. This is slated to be completed June slash July twenty-two. So just a few months off. Any questions on either one of those facilities? Next. Uh, this past fall, the college, working closely with the Office of Sponsor Program and Sponsor Research and faculty uh staff, secured three point one million dollars in new grants, which include the U.S. National Science Foundation Future for Manufacturing, U.S. Economic Development Administrative Build Back Fella Regional Challenge, U.S. Economic Development Administrative, Southwestern Pennsylvania New Economy Collaborative Build Back Fella Regional Challenge Entrepreneurial Maker Space, and then an Empower Grant from Siemens. All of these are offering different opportunities to provide some form of education, training, or access to a new skill within our region. So I extend thanks to all staff and the entire office that worked to complete these initiatives this past uh year. Um, and then lastly, on this one, lastly, was the um It's on Us grant that we just know, received notification yes yesterday. So we are one of thirty-nine institutions in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to receive an It's on Us grant. This grant will support CCAC's efforts to keep the campuses safe, inclusive, and welcoming for all students. And I always like to acknowledge and celebrate work of our team. Uh, Dr. Yvonne Walters did a piece in the Paul Trustees Magazine that each of you received. He did an article on expanding access and success through community partnerships. Um, it speaks about the work that we're doing here, and the value added by bringing partners together to help guide and contribute to the growth of workforce connections. So congratulations, Dr. Walters, for getting the national recognition in uh Trustees Magazine.
Congratulations.
Trustees, that completes my update report. Are there any questions?
A lot of good stuff, a lot of good stuff. At the end of twenty twenty-two, I, I felt with a lot that was going on, appreciate the update definitely on facilities, all of the great work that's going on in terms of data. Uh, it's very impressive, the team, uh, staff team and leadership is working very hard, and it shows.
Thank you.
Forward with what goes on in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Dr. Bullock. Um, I agree with your comments, LaShawna, uh, uh, each meeting that we that we're here and we come together, we just continue to learn more and see the different layers and continue to be impressed. Um, I thought the report on the supportive services was uh was, was eye-opening and, and very impressive. Uh, such an important population, and a, as was mentioned, we need to make sure that the resources continue to be there for that, that population. Um, and then the grants work, I mean, that's something we don't always focus on, but every, every other meeting, it seems like the, the staff is bringing home more resources and doing their work, so uh, and the nice work. I think that's all for the agenda. Uh, if anyone has any other questions or, or comments they'd like to make?
Dr. Bullock's leadership is, is very good.
Great. Um, I think I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Okay, first and second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That concludes the meeting.